Brian, how are you?
Doing good. Thank you.
Good. Good. How's life in North Ogden City?
It's about what I remembered.
Yeah, yeah, okay, not a big change.
You know, he's getting pretty bold. He wants his transportation utility fee money already. He wants it back.
Wow.
I don't know.
I said I annexed in a week too late. I missed the credit.
Well, let's go ahead and get started this evening. Thanks, Council, for spending your evening with us. We'll try not to take up a lot of your time. Welcome to the public, those who have joined us tonight. It's always great to have you with us. It's good to see Councilwoman Extron feeling better. And to have her with us, thumbs up to that, so.
Yeah, well, actually, it didn't even feel very bad. I felt bad for about three days and it really was just a slight cold, but it took that long to get my stupid COVID test back to tell me it was negative. Which, so, anyway.
We're glad you're with us.
Getting me hugs for a whole week.
And Councilmember Stoker, I think, is on her way home. She's on her phone now, but she'll join us when she gets home, so.
I'm here.
Yes. You are here.
I am here.
Well, it's good to have you with us. Although, you know, it's an interesting shot on the camera we've got, but we'll go with it. All right. Once again, welcome, and we'll start this evening. Our thought or invocation and pledge will be by Councilmember Exstrom. So you can tell us what you're going to do.
Okay, I'll do an invocation.
All right.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are so very grateful to be members of this beautiful community. We're grateful to have thy guidance and inspiration as we lead and direct the affairs of the city and pray that thy Spirit will attend us this night. We're so grateful for our residents. We're grateful for our staff. We're grateful for all those who put their hearts and souls into serving one another. We are so very grateful for the freedoms that we have. We're grateful for this time of year and for the celebrations that we get to enjoy. We ask thee for thy guidance. We ask thee for protection. We ask thee to continue to inspire and comfort us. Please bless those members of our community who are struggling and please help us to help them in whatever ways we can. Please help our eyes and ears to be opened and our hearts to be open to one another and to any ideas that we have that can be of service and help. We're again so grateful for all that we have and ask these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Exstrom. We'll now go ahead with our Pledge of Allegiance. John will get the flag up there. There he goes.
Perfect. Who'll repeat with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Exstrom. Very much appreciated. Since we don't have really a anchor location, it's necessary for me to read the following regarding public meetings without an anchor location. So I'll go ahead and read that now. Pursuant to Utah Code Section 59-2-407, the mayor of North Ogden City hereby determines that conducting an electronic meeting with an anchor location present presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. This determination is based on the November 8, 2020 declaration by the governor of the state of Utah regarding the increase in COVID-19 cases and the need for caution in people meeting together. So the December 22, 2020 meeting of North Ogden City will be held electronically and will not have a physical location. All attendees will connect remotely and links for public participation are available on our, on the North Ogden City website. So with that, we'll go ahead and proceed. At this time, this is something I'd like to do each meeting. We've added this to the agenda, but if there are any conflicts of interest or potential conflicts of interest regarding our agenda tonight, that would be the time for anyone to state their perceived conflict. Are there any tonight? Okay, I see none, so we'll go to item number three under our consent agenda, which is a action to consider approving the December 1, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion on that? Any corrections? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the December 1, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Swanson. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Exstrom. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Are there any nays to the motion? All right, we'll move on to item number four then, which is our public comments. John, if you would monitor those and just a reminder, if you do have a comment, if you would state your name, your address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes would be greatly appreciated. So, John, please let us know. Are you seeing any, John?
Not any yet.
All right, seeing we have no public comments at this point in time, we'll move on to item number five on our agenda. Our presenter will be Rob Scott, and this is an action to consider an ordinance correcting the ordinance that was previously passed, ordinance number 2020-07. This is regarding accessory building standards. So, John, would you want to let Rob in?
I'm in, Mayor.
Rob, it's good to have you with us tonight. Thanks for joining.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So this evening, we have a corrected ordinance to present to you. Back in April, the city council passed an ordinance regarding accessory building standards in residential zones. The HP zones, I inadvertently took out the existing standards and just added new standards. So what is being brought before you tonight is to return the standards that were deleted and retain those that were to be added. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions on Rob's presentation to correct the ordinance? All right, seeing none, if there's no further discussion, is there any discussion? If not, I would look for a motion to approve ordinance 2020-28, which is correcting ordinance 2020-07 regarding accessory building standards. Do we have a motion?
Mayor.
My motion. Councilman Severing?
I move that we approve ordinance 2020-28, replacing 2020-07.
Okay, so correcting ordinance 2020-07. Do we have a second to Councilmember Severing's motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Barker. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a ordinance, so we'll have a roll call vote. We'll start with Council Severing.
Yes.
Councilman Barker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Exstrom?
Yes.
And Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to a a discussion that will be presented to us by Brandon Bell. This discussion is to consider preliminary approval for a breeding permit to breed dogs in a residential area zoned R18. Brandon, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. I was on mute. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm not sure, just one item regarding what's listed on the agenda. It's the consideration is just for approval, not preliminary approval. There's only one stage of approval for this. I'm not sure how that ended up. But this is this is our ordinance currently requires a breeding pet permit. And however, at the same time, this is the first time that anyone on staff currently has run through the process of an application and I'll go through the comments that I have in regards to the ordinance and how the applicants fulfilled those and then just give a little bit of staff commentary on the end on the ordinance itself. Within the last few months, we've had a resident who has the intent to make sure that she's fulfilling the city ordinances regarding breeding, approach the city and seeking a business license and and it became clear that our ordinance requires a breeding permit for the activities that she'd like to engage in. She has two, well, three bulldogs. I think two males and one female that she'd like to breed and so she's applied for that breeding permit. And this requirement in city ordinance comes from ordinance, sorry, city codes, section 6-1-3. So I'll quote the relevant sections of the ordinance and the staff commentary on that. Breeding dogs in a residential area is, well, it's prohibited to breed dogs in a residential area without first obtaining a dog breeder permit. The applicant submitted the materials to apply for that permit. And it's required as part of any animal-related businesses, including service dog and therapy dog-related businesses. Our ordinance states it's unlawful for someone to to keep or use live animals outside of regular pets without first obtaining this permit. The applicant has provided, as required by ordinance, her name, address, and phone number, the address of where the business will be operated, which is the same place. The nature of the business, which the applicant has stated, is to show and breed quality bulldogs. The next requirement in the ordinance is that the kinds of classes and services that the applicant anticipates offering through the business. The staff comment on that requirement is that the only service anticipated is to breed and sell these bulldogs. The next requirement is that the applicant provide the number and types of animals that the business will use, which again is three adult dogs, two studs, and one female. And that complies with the limit on adult dogs that's in the, that's in the city ordinance. The next requirement is that a plan of the business showing the facilities for keeping the animals is required. On the applicant's provided a a drawing showing the layout of the area where she intends to keep her dogs inside of her home, including the area for whelping, which is a technical term for birthing needs. The bulldogs are typically kept indoors due to their sensitivity to climate and temperature, and the applicant has also stated that the that the female will be impregnated off-site at a vet's office. The hours of operation of the business, the applicant has listed hours of operation as Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. However, it's, this is not anticipated to be a typical business with a regular traffic to the home. Those visits to the home are anticipated to be only those that are associated with viewing, acquiring, and picking up puppies. The traffic is not anticipated to be frequent or daily on a consistent basis, but just to occur only at times when the puppies are for sale. The next requirement is not applicable since it's not related, this business is not related to therapy animals. At least it's not been stated that it is. And then there's no fee, which is if they're supposed to pay the fee, if there's a required fee, which there's not one listed. And then we just use the existing home occupation license application since it requires the same for this permit, since it requires the same basic information. The final section of the ordinance, I'll read a little bit more closely. It, as it refers to the role of the city council as listed in current city ordinance, it says, "The city council shall review all applications for animal-related businesses, business permits, and shall grant the permit if it finds that the animal-related business is in appropriate use in the location proposed. The facilities are adequate for the proposed animal-related businesses, and the proposed business is unlikely to become a nuisance. In granting a permit to operate an animal-related business, the city council may set conditions regarding the animal-related business's proposed hours of operation, the number and type of animals the animal-related business may keep on the property. In the case of an animal therapy business, such limits shall be for dogs or less," which this is not to our understanding, "animal therapy business." And then finally, "the facilities to be used to ensure that the animal-related business does not become a health hazard." The staff comment on this section of the ordinance is that the city council should consider the application for a breeding permit and determine if it meets the requirements for approval. Staff recommends that the applicant has met the requirements of the ordinance and the city council approve the breeding permit. Also, just staff commentary is that to our knowledge, none of the staff nor the council was here when this ordinance was created or applied to the city or adopted by the city. And this is the first person that we've had apply for a breeding permit. We think that this is an antiquated ordinance and we actually, we recommend that it be eliminated either as part of the zoning code update or on its own sometime in the near future. Again, the intent of the ordinance, the applicant is simply to comply with the with ordinance as it stands, but we feel that the impact to this type of activity is so low that it's not necessary to regulate it as it currently is in our ordinance. So those are my comments. Does the council have any questions for me regarding this application?
Counsel, any questions for Brandon?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, Brandon, I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned that we just, not too long ago, where we approved three animals. Does the, and this is really just from my own knowledge, not that I'm trying to question the applicant's integrity, anything like that, what she's trying to do. But it's more from my personal knowledge. So does the breeding pet permit allow them to have more? It obviously allows them to have more than three dogs.
Well, what it does is the, the a typical resident in the city who just wants to have dogs for pets can have three adult dogs. I believe the, I believe the way that it limits puppies is that that the dogs can be three dogs that are above six months in age. So, in other words, they can have they can have the puppies, but they have to sell them by six months of age. And so basically, this is kind of a really narrow addresses a really narrow activity of breeding dogs because technically in the city, you can have three adult dogs, but they can't procreate without a breeding permit, technically. And so that's one of the reasons why we suggest that it be eliminated from our ordinance. And, you know, since I'm sure that there probably are people that, you know, are having puppies and stuff without a breeding permit, so it doesn't change the number of adult dogs. It hasn't, it just carves out this requirement for people who are intending to breed.
Okay, thank you for your question.
Clarified.
Mayor? Question. Is that, Councilman Swanson, did you have a question?
Councilman Barker does, and then I'll chime in.
Hey, Councilman Barker?
When I was reading through this, I agree with Brandon. This is kind of an antiquated ordinance. And I thought the same thing. What's going to happen to everybody that has puppies or their dogs get pregnant? What do we do about that? It's not, it does not seem like something that I really want to think we should be enforcing. And I'm, I'm okay approving this tonight, but we need to probably strict this from our records or ordinances.
Okay, we'll make sure that gets on the future agenda to address that issue. Thank you, Councilman Barker. Councilman Swanson?
The only question I have is, are there any state or county regulations from the Health Department or other departments that govern in part or in whole, the dog breeding? I don't know of any. Just, Brandon, if you know whether or not there are.
I do not know myself, but that's, if the council and the mayor would like us to pursue us adjusting this ordinance, that's definitely something that we could look at in the process and determine how it would square with any changes to the ordinance.
I think Councilman Swanson has a good point. When staff brings this back to the council to address, would you make sure that question is answered, Brandon?
I'd be happy to.
Good question, Councilman Swanson. Any others?
No, not for me.
You know, I'd like to, first of all, commend Ashley for her integrity of approaching us for this license. Brandon said it's the first one, so if Ashley's with us tonight, I wanted to thank her for her integrity. And following the ordinance and bringing it to our attention, and we shortly will address it. I'm sorry, Councilmember Exstrom, did I, did I see you wanted to make a comment?
Oh, I just, kind of, just a thought came to my, I was like, bulldogs, what kind of bulldogs? And I see on her application that she's doing English bulldogs. But then it caught me thinking, do we have any restrictions on any other kind of breeds of dogs? You know, and the only reason I ask is because I have a dog that is a problem, you know? It's like, yeah, he has to be like, put, you know, behind locked doors and we have to medicate him and he's all sorts of it. But it's not necessarily because of his breed, but I just, it just made me have the question. What kind of things do we have in place for, you know, any particular type of type of breeds or, you know, I'm not, maybe I should ask Councilmember Swanson, he's more of a dog person than I am.
You know, that's a good question. I remember reading an article where some cities tried to prevent breeding of pit bulls. And I believe that that went to court and it was overruled that you couldn't stop for specific breeds, but that's another question we can shortly look into.
I think in 2019, the 2019 legislative session at the state level, the state legislature, John, correct me if I'm thinking incorrectly on this issue. That the legislature passed a law that cities cannot discriminate against particular dog breeds. They eliminated the ability to do that statewide.
That's my recollection, Councilman Swanson, but we'll look into that before we come back with a recommendation to the council. So, good question, Councilmember Exstrom, thank you. Are there any other questions, Council? Does the council sense they need to hear from the applicant, or should we move forward with approval? Looks like the council is ready to move forward with approval. So we would look for a motion to give approval for a breeding permit to breed dogs in a residential area zoned R18. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the applicant's, or the application for the breeding permit in this said residence zone.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Exstrom. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Severing. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Thank you, Council. Before we move on to the next item, I just want to clarify something back on our item number five on our agenda. To make sure that we're correct on that, I believe what we needed is a motion on ordinance 2028. It was simply amending a portion of the ordinance of 2020-07, not the entire ordinance.
Mayor, they're not amending a portion of it. They're completely getting a new ordinance.
Well, I'm going to defer here to our city attorney who sent me a text message saying we need to fix the motion on ordinance 2020-28. It was only amending a portion of the ordinance, not the entire ordinance. So, John, you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, so it was, there was one table that was incorrect in that ordinance. It wasn't the whole ordinance. It was just the one related to the HP zones. And we amended the accessory buildings in all zones, so it should just be this section. I think I'm sharing this now. This 1198 is the correct section that's being amended. So, and Susan helped me catch that.
So, John, what is your recommendation? Our city recorder is saying that the motion was correct.
I got word this today when I asked about it, if it was amending the ordinance or a whole new ordinance, and I was told something different, so anyway, whatever John believes it should be.
Okay, John, I guess we're deferring to you, so.
So if we, if we just tweak it to say it's amending the this, this section 1198 from the previous ordinance. And we, as staff, we should have done a better job of giving enough. We should have given a better summary for the council.
Okay, none of us are perfect. Councilmember Severing, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, I do. Excuse me. Then I would move that we accept ordinance 2020-28, amending 11-9-8 of the code of the ordinance 2020-07.
John, is that adequate to meet the request?
Yes.
Do we have a second to Councilmember Severing's motion?
Second.
Have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go through a roll call vote again. Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Councilmember Exstrom?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Are you good with that, John?
Yes.
All right, good. We'll move on to item number seven on our agenda, which is the discussion or action to consider an interim city recorder. As the public may know, and as the council does know, our city recorder of 19 years, Annette Spindlove, will be retiring effective December 30. And so we need to appoint a interim recorder. So, John, call, do you want to present that to the council?
Sure. So it's, it's not a complicated thing. We just, the state code, Title 10, requires that we have a city recorder at all times with Annette retiring and us right in the middle of the selection process. We, we just need to make sure that we have at least an interim city recorder to carry us through until a new person can be appointed. At this point, we anticipate that appointment will happen at the first regular meeting in January. And, and we might also, and we also would anticipate that at that time, the person would be, actually be starting in the, with the city about that same time, you know, with two weeks' notice and things. We haven't selected an individual yet. We've done some interviews. And I think we're going to be looking for some council feedback. But the one employee has offered to fulfill that role, and I've talked it over with the mayor, and technically, the mayor would be the one who makes the recommendation. But the employee who's offered to fill in is Susan Nance, who is one of our current deputy city recorders. So what we need is technically, Mayor, for you to make that recommendation, if you're okay with it, to the council, and the council would do a vote for advice and, or to advise and consent. And it would be an interim city recorder appointment.
Yes, and I am into technicalities, John. So, but before I make that recommendation, I would like to see if there's any discussion from the council. And just to update them, we have interviewed four candidates. And uh just to update them, we have interviewed four candidates. Uh, I think we had, was it seven or nine applications, John? It was
Nine.
Nine applications and uh we selected four of those to interview, and we think we have some good candidates out there. So we, we finished our interviewing process uh this morning. So we, we are moving along on that, but before I make a recommendation, uh, I would like to hear from the council. Any any comments uh from the, from the council? I'm not hearing any, so I would assume there is no concerns with us appointing Susan Nance as our interim uh city recorder. Uh, John, we uh obviously need a motion to, to do that. So.
Mayor, I'll move that we approve that, that, that consent to Susan Nance being our interim city recorder.
Okay. John, is uh, do we need a second on that? This is obviously the first time we've uh, a lot more as we've done.
A second would be appropriate.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a second to Councilmember Swanson's consent to appointing Susan Nance. So we have a second by Councilmember Stoker. Is there any further discussion? Being none, then, uh, all in favor of my recommendation and Councilmember Swanson's motion uh to consent to my recommendation, would you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, congratulations to Susan Nance, who will serve as our interim recorder. We appreciate her willingness to uh serve and do that, so. Okay, we'll move on now to item number eight. And uh we have some reports tonight from uh Councilmember Stoker, uh Councilmember Severing and Councilmember Extron. We'll go in that order, and do you have anything to report and to update the citizens on what's going on in your area of of responsibility? Councilmember Stoker?
Um, I do. Uh, the, uh, the, the police department had a few um issues during, with various reasons, like with surgeries, training, COVID nineteen related reasons, but um they were pretty spread, stretched pretty thin, but they um worked as a team and got through it without sacrificing the service to the city, and I'm sure most of us didn't realize that anything was amiss, so thanks to them for their hard work and stepping up and everything. And of course, with the pandemic, the Christmas um luncheon and gathering was um um postponed or canceled. And so they usually give out awards during this time. So they improvised and presented the awards individually, and they made the announcements by email. And here are the highlights of some of the awards. Sergeant Jason Child got the City Peak Award. Officer Rob Rhodes received the Employee of the Year Award. Sergeant Jason Child received the Impaired Driving Enforcement Award. And Sergeant Anthony, Anthony Bressam received their narcotics sus- um suspense, suspension. Is that, am I saying that right, Chief, or if you're on? And let's see, these individuals got their years of service awards. Um, Officer Crowther got forty years, um Officer Rhodes twenty five, Officer Heinz twenty. Um, uh Officer Jackson, um, five years. And these individuals got their uh Superior Physical Fitness Award. Um, Detective Mark, say his last name for me, Mayor.
John, go ahead. I'm not sure I can pronounce it.
Yeah.
Ted Strahm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Laura Barker, Mark Toon, and Maria. Again, I'm terrible at last names. Help me out, John.
Uh, sorry, I'm is it uh pre- which, I'm sorry, I don't see the one you're looking at.
Maria Cabrera?
Oh, Cabrera.
Cabrera. So, sorry for slaughtering your names, everybody. So anyway, that's the report I have, and um just appreciate all, all that our police officers do and keeping us safe in the city and and that's my report.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Stoker, do you know the name of the new dog we got? Our new canine?
I did. I did. I knew we got one. And that was about the time that um some of the officers came down with COVID.
Yeah.
So I do know that, but no, not the name. I don't remember it.
Okay, we retired our previous one. I, I know Councilman Swanson has suggested we name it Phil, but I don't know if that happened or not. But we do have a new canine dog. Uh, we, uh, as you know, Montana legalized marijuana, so they had uh no longer had a need for the dog, so we, we picked it up at a good price and we sent two officers up there and they brought back the dog and COVID, so.
What a deal.
Thanks for your report, Councilmember Stoker. Councilmember Severing, do you have anything you'd like to report this evening?
You know, Mayor, um, we had a great Public Works uh Christmas meal. And there were some, uh, there were some awards given. I do not remember uh the recipients of those awards. And I'm gonna be honest, and I apologize, but I did not get a chance to follow up with uh uh the Public Works Director, Dave Espinoza, for this meeting. So I am uh, I am without any information.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Extron, uh, do you want to give us a, a brief report on Parks and Recreation?
Brief. Sure, absolutely. Although I will give a shout out to the Public Works. They did a fantastic job with our snowstorm. I've, my roads were nicely plowed so that my, our delivery drivers could get to their houses. So yay for the Public Works. Um, yes, uh Parks and Rec, we've got I, I didn't get to go to the holiday party because I was waiting COVID results, so um I want to just give a shout out to all of the Parks and Rec Department because they are all awesome. They are just fantastic. Tiffany is just absolutely amazing in her leadership, and um I love every single one of them. Um, we, we did have also the first meeting of our Arts Guild, and it's a great group of people, and they are gonna do some amazing things. They talked about a, quite a few things, primarily fundraising, getting kind of some grants going. So that will be really exciting to get that um underway. Um, let's see, Tiffany had given me an update. She said they canceled kindergarten basketball. Um, we, it's the North Ogden, plays North Ogden League, and they didn't have any gym space because of COVID nineteen restrictions. Um, she wants us to kind of be looking ahead to Cherry Days for next year. The registrations for the activities, they, they postponed until April first. We're assuming we're going to be able to have it again. Um, but it is over a weekend. Um, we have the Fourth of July is on Sunday on, in twenty twenty one, so we need to decide if we're going to have the celebrations which day. So are we gonna do them on Saturday or do them on Mondays? Generally has um been the uh tradition in North Ogden to not hold them on Sunday, but on another day. And let's see, and also they, she would like some direction on the flowers. Um, this is the time that she needs to get them ordered. This is when they start growing them, so I think, you know, judging from what the council has discussed last, we were, you know, still gonna go ahead with the flowers and, and basically all of the expense of it was gonna go from RDA funds. So that's just the only thing that she was wanting some feedback on, or those couple of things.
I think uh Tiffany also sent me uh an email uh with some of those same questions, and uh I think the last discussion we had was not if we were going to have flowers, but how many would we go every other poll or what would we do? So if she needs that feedback, um, I, I don't recall what we put in the budget um for this year. The uh, the RDA budget would be expended out of there like you mentioned, but um, Councilmember Barker, let's uh, let's go with you. What is your uh recommendation on the flowers?
I thought we kind of said maybe every other poll this year, just um, where we having a rough budget year, but we're finding out it's not so bad, but it is RDA funds. Um, I'm not quite sure what else we had budgeted with the RDA, but my recommendation might be to do every other poll this year and just see how that is.
Councilmember Severing?
Yeah, it seems to me, weren't we looking at an expenditure of the RDA of about thirty thousand dollars for the flowers, John?
Yeah, I think that included maintenance, maintenance and the purchase of the flowers.
That's correct. It's just under thirty.
It was under thirty. I, I I like the flowers. I think that they, they really add a lot uh in the community. And, and I think there's a lot of people who like them. It could save us a little money out of the RDA if we were to just go every other, every other poll, so I would be I'm agreeable for the, I'm agreeable for the flowers. Um, let's try every other poll.
Okay. Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
What is your?
I like the flowers. Of course, I like flowers. They are, um, they're pretty and a lot of the residents comment, and even those driving through the city say how pretty they are and how much they enjoy them. So um, I'm definitely a flower person and okay with that every other poll.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
What are your thoughts on every other poll?
I would prefer every poll, as we've been doing. We budgeted that in the RDA, and I think we ought to continue. It's uh, that thirty thousand has been the annual expenditure and um, I think is beautiful. I love having it on every poll, and that's my preference.
Okay. Mayor, can I add?
Yes.
I would like to see it every poll unless there was a need for that money out of the RDA to go elsewhere. Otherwise, I would be a proponent of every poll.
Well, as you know, we do have a uh uh, a need to uh have a plan to spend that money. There's been some recommendations, so I don't think there's an immediate plan, but there's long-term plan to spend the money to enhance economic development in the city. Right, so uh.
So I'm happy with that.
Immediately.
With the every poll.
To do with the money. So where, where are you then, Councilmembers uh Severing?
I am happy for every poll as well. I know we have the money in the RDA. Um, I, my only hesitation was that if there was, if, if part of that money needed to go elsewhere, we could do every other poll. But I'm happy with every poll. I'm with Phil and, I'm with Phil and Cheryl on this one and the other members of the council. I, I like it. It's a beautiful part of the city.
Councilmember Extron?
I love the flowers.
I think you've got your answer.
Okay, yes, all right, sounds good. And it sounds like we, you know, if, if we had some other purpose, I think, for the money, um, but we don't currently, I mean, I just, so if, if it's kind of a, we need to we need to use it for something, I do, I do love that we have those, those flowers. I've been to other, I think, where did we go? Kim and I went and uh toured around Vernal. And Vernal had just had these huge baskets of them like, like this, and boy, let me tell you, it, it really put a coat of paint on Vernal, Utah. You know, just to have those flowers, and of course, ours is, uh, our city is much more beautiful than, than Vernal, but I do think it's a little bit of an exclamation point to have those flowers.
Yeah, Vernal, Vernal does need a uh uh, they're a great city. Uh, once again, I don't want us to think we don't have a need for that money.
No, no.
Because there, there will be a need for that money, uh, as evidence presented. You know, there's some fairly expensive uh um, projects coming down the road, so I, I don't, don't want people to think we don't have a use uh for that money. Uh, one of the things I've heard is, is some of the flowers are not, you can't see them because the trees are blocking them. Um, so uh, I'm actually not, you know, I'm a proponent of every other one. I think that uh, does the beauty, but the council has spoken, and so we'll go with um uh, the council's recommendation for uh every poll.
You'll remember, Mayor, I was against trees.
Wait a minute, you're for flower. What kind of environmentalist are you?
I was against. No, I was against trees right from the start because they get big and you can't see things, and then they end up being cut down.
Yeah, well, they are blocking some, but uh, you know, I'm grateful for trees because occasionally I like to hug them. So. All right.
Just saying.
Anything else? Uh, Councilmember Extron?
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much for that report, and I did have an opportunity to uh attend all of the Christmas luncheons. And uh, we've got great team members here in the city, and uh it surely wasn't as festive of everybody could uh got uh met and got together, but uh I think we, we, we recognize the uh employees and let them know that we appreciate them, so. Uh, thank you. All right, with that, do we have any public comments? John, if you'd let us know? John, do you see any? Hello, John?
Nope, no, no chats or hands yet.
Okay, well, we'll just wait a few seconds and uh.
Oh, I do have a hand raised from Brenda Ashdown.
All right, Brenda, it's good to have you with us this evening. Would you state your name and address for us, please?
Uh, she might still be out. There she goes.
I did. Hi, I pushed the wrong button. Brenda Ashdown, one ninety-three East Pleasant View Drive in North Ogden. I'm just curious, when I um come to the meetings, I can see what council members are there. Is there a way when we first begin these online meetings for the public to see or to find out what council members are in attendance?
Sure, we can, we can do that. You bet.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good idea. We'll make sure we do that. Anything else, John?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. Do we have any comments from uh the council and additional comments uh you've received? Uh, I see we have a chat from Edith. She's uh, her and Mike are appreciative of the approval for the flowers, and she just wants us to know that. Oh, thank you, Edith.
Mayor, I had a question then, because it, that, that Brenda's comment brings up an interesting point, of course. You know, we have control and I can, I can see who's on, but I don't, I don't know exactly what the public is seeing on YouTube, if they can't see all of us. Do they just see the agenda up, or what, what do they see? Maybe John can answer that question.
John, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, so when the screen is being shared, the only two things that people can see is the screen sharing and the person talking. And so, so when the screen is not being shared, so I'll stop share, then they can see anybody who's on the, the, any of the panelists. Um, and they all have the option of selecting to only see the panelists with video on. Um, but during the conversation, when we're sharing screen, they'll only see the person talking.
But there are times during the meeting that they see what we're seeing now, John, which is, is uh all the council members.
Yeah, and if, if you'd like, counsel, we could, typically I start with the agenda as the shared screen. And if you'd like, we could start with this panel, the way it looks now, and then at, and then put the agenda up after the Pledge of Allegiance or something like that.
Well, let's do that, John. That would give the public more information.
Okay.
That's a, thank you, Brenda, for bringing that to our attention.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Barker?
Uh, I've had the same question, and I actually logged in, since I'm at the fire station, I logged in on my work computer one time onto Zoom, and it had the agenda, and down the side, it showed four or five of us, each individually. each individually, even during a screen share. So there's always our picture showing. But I don't know if that's current with everyone or if you're, it's different if you're on an Apple or a tablet or phone or whatever. But on a computer, it shows everybody and the agenda.
Well, I think, yeah, good. Thanks for that information, Councilman Barker. We'll just make sure that the first of the meeting, we, I think that's the citizens surely need to know who's participating, so.
And it might be different depending on whether they're actually logged into the Zoom meeting or if they're just watching on YouTube. Because I was thinking, you know, what's, what's actually being broadcast to YouTube? Because it might be a little bit different. Maybe that's just what John sees as, because of YouTube or something.
I believe it's recording what we see here, isn't it, John, basically?
Yeah, so it, it records everything that is seen on the screen and it toggles out the person who's speaking on the YouTube feed.
Okay. Any other comments from, uh, council members this evening?
I, I've got one.
Councilman Barker, go ahead.
Um, I'm actually a big fan of flowers too. If you come to my yard in the summertime, I'll put my, well, I won't put my yard up against anyone's because my dad has more than I do. But I, I'm a big fan of the flowers, even though or don't, I'm not in favor of putting them on every poll.
Yeah, I think, I think to your point, Councilman Barker, is that there are literally numerous polls and they're getting more, more that are blocked where you actually can't see the flowers. So maybe if we're going to have them on every poll, we, we might want to trim back the trees and, and maybe we could have Councilmember Stoker take the tree trimming assignment since she's.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Barker, for your comments. Uh, I too like flowers and I think they, uh, they do set us apart in some aspect. Uh, I'm just one of moderation, I guess. Okay, uh, any other comments? Phil, did you have?
One quick comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is a well-behaved potty-trained dog.
Oh, rub it in, Phil.
See how he just lays there and puts his head down? Yeah, that's what they.
Rub it in. I'm going to be bringing my dog up to your place.
Bring it over.
Yeah, rub it in. I appreciate your humor. We need a little bit, that's for sure. Uh, any other comments from council?
Um, maybe I can just give Tiffany the directives to, um, maybe just use her discretion on, you know, if there are spots where the, a flower could go, but is not necessarily going to be fully enjoyed, that maybe we don't put it there.
Well, uh,
Blocked by trees, then we can put, you know, if we've got a beautiful tree, then we can have a beautiful flower somewhere else.
There. All right, thank you. Um, just one comment I have, uh, and I'd like to hear from Annette. She's been in the city for nineteen years and is in the recorder. As we previously stated, she'll be leaving the city on December thirtieth. So Annette, uh, I'd open it up for the council for any comments of appreciation and then, uh, you'd like to say a few words, uh, as part of your departure? I think that would be great. So Annette, why don't we go ahead and start with you? Do you have?
Wow. Not gonna put up a video. It has been a pleasure to serve the citizens of North. I really am excited to retire and I never thought, my kids always said I'd have to be carried out kicking and screaming, but it's worked out so well and I'm, want to thank the citizens of North Ogden for all their support and to the council and staff, keep the city. Well, the city is in good hands. You're, you're in good hands, but keep it moving forward in good ways. And they'll always, I mean, there's always someone to replace you and, and I'm talking about me and, just support that person and, and help them do their job well, giving them the training they need to do their job. Thank you, everyone, for the years you've let me be here.
Thank you, Annette. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. That, that happened to me at our board meeting a couple of weeks ago and my reaction was about the same as yours. It's an emotional time. Uh, it's not necessarily the work, it's the relationships you develop and, uh, and over the years, you've developed a lot of relationships in the city, so. Any comments from the council, words of encouragement for Annette?
Ned, this is Councilman Severing. I just wanted to say thank you for helping me when I first became a city councilman. You were very supportive and, uh, you did some personal training, um, that I was very grateful for. And, um, since I was recently, well, two years ago, I semi-retired from a full-time career and I had some fear and trembling. And now I look back, uh, after two years and twenty-seven years, I would, uh, I would never go back. It's been absolutely awesome to be able to spend more time with my, with my sweetheart and also to be, uh, able to spend a little bit more me time hiking in the beautiful hills of Van Lomond. So it's not going to take you too long before you'll be grateful for, for this change. It's, it's awesome.
Thank you, Councilman Swanson. I see you unmuted yourself. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, you know, it's not just, uh, the current council and mayor, but it's a lot of former council members, mayors, staff, um, that have been helped along the way and taught and instructed well by Annette and, and really kept us going straight. So, uh, I, I would just remind it, there are many, not just those of us on the call tonight that are grateful for all that she gave to the city.
Well, based upon those comments, I'm thinking about creating an award for Net, the Keeping Phil Swanson Straight, uh, that, that, that merits some, uh,
Well, that, that'll get her into heaven, so.
There you go. Anyone else?
Mayor? Go ahead, Cheryl.
Yes, I would like to also say thanks to Net for, um, the years that you've helped me and answered questions and walked me through things and at times take, walked me off the edge because I was, couldn't think straight or very anxious about things. Um, you will be missed. Just appreciate your years of service and all that you've done and continue to do and, and enjoy your retirement. I'm a little jealous.
All right, Councilwoman Ekstrom, did you have a?
I did. I just, I can, I can go on and on, you know, but I will be very brief and just tell her thank you so much. She has done, the, the amount of work that that woman has put in the last nineteen years is really astounding. And, um, she's contributed immensely in ways that, that have been both seen and unseen. And as Councilwoman Swanson pointed out, not just this council, but many councils and lots of different people. And, um, I think we can all give a very, very heartfelt thank you and, um, best wishes moving forward, which I know she's going to enjoy very much, just as Councilwoman, um, Severing pointed out. And plus she's got these grandkids that she gets to go spoil, so we love you, Annette, and thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Ekstrom. Councilmember Barker?
Yeah, just echo what's already been said. We're appreciative. I'm glad you're still living here in North Ogden so we can run into each other at Smith's like last Saturday or excuse me, around town. But, or not, not Smith's, Lee's, Lee's, that's where we were. But I, I told Annette earlier this week, uh, that I've relayed this to other people. This is the happiest I've seen Annette in a while. And so I'm excited for her to get to retirement, to get through one more week of dealing with all of us and then to enjoy her life. So we're happy for you, Annette. Thanks.
Yes. And it's kind of a.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
For lack of a better word, it's kind of a crappy time to be retiring. We surely like to get together and, uh, wish her well, but, uh, we'll probably pull something out of our hat.
No, you're, you're okay. Thank you, everyone.
Years, yeah, you deserve more than a few comments on the Zoom meeting, so. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And, uh, do we have any comments from, uh, staff this evening?
I do have one.
Well, what a surprise.
Um, we, we have a joint work session with the Safety Committee on the Fifth of January. Um, so that, or the Public Safety Committee, I think I said that wrong. Um, and so just so the council's aware of that, you'll be getting an invite to a Zoom meeting, um, as well as the public. Um, that's something that, you know, is going to start the, you know, we've got those reports and had a lot of discussion and this will really help move us in, uh, making a decision on what the plan is for this year. So, or the next, let's just say for the next ten or twenty years, because I think that's the, that's really the timeframe we're looking at is what does the city need for the next twenty years? So.
Hey, John, thank you very much. Speaking of that, uh, we had any further conversations with Utopia about doing a, uh, the survey? Could you update us on that?
Uh, yes, thank you for reminding me. I, I have talked to them. Um, they are uh, going to put together the survey and send, or put together what they're suggesting the survey should include um, and send it over for us to review and then also for the council to review. Um, and if the council would like, we could even include that discussion in a council meeting for this is what the survey will ask. Or any additional items and then, uh, we will do that full-court blitz on trying to get the survey out to as many people who would like to respond. And then we can go from there.
All right, thank you for that update. Anything else, John?
Uh, nope, I think that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Muchly appreciated. Uh, with that, uh, this evening, we'd like to, uh, have a, a closed meeting to have a discussion regarding the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual uh, in our city. Um, so I would be looking, uh, for a, a motion to recess the active agenda of, active agenda of the City Council meeting and enter into a closed meeting to discuss what I mentioned before, the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Uh, I would need a motion to, uh, recess the active agenda and enter into a closed meeting. Do we have a motion to do that?
Mayor? I move that we recess our active agenda and actually move into a closed meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Barker. Do we have any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, we'll take a vote, a voice vote. Uh, all in favor of, uh, closing the active agenda and entering into a closed meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Our meeting then is recessed at seven oh four PM. John, if you would send out the, the Zoom information for us to connect to the closed meeting, uh, we'll do that. So with that, we'd ask staff and the, the public to sign off and before the public does, we'd like to wish them a very Merry Christmas and thanks for your support during this year and we look to a fantastic year coming up in 2021, so. Okay, John, we will watch for you to send out the information to connect.